Amy. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Lakeville Area School Board Candidate Forum, sponsored by the Lakeville Area Chamber of Commerce. I am Amy Ergenbrack with Thriven Financial, a Lakeville resident and member of the Lakeville Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Board of Directors. I will serve as tonight's moderator. The timekeeper for tonight's forum will be Colleen LeBeau of LeBeau &amp; Associates and Chamber Access and Issues Committee Member. We have invited all seven candidates to join us for tonight's forum. As this is a forum allowing for those of you in attendance and at home to get to know each of the candidates better, regarding business issues, we have organized the candidates in attendance by random draw. This took place with the candidates prior to the start of this evening. This year's candidates are Laura Carter, Judy Kelleher, Katie Roberto, Teri Lind, David Anderson, Laura Sanders, and Sarah Welcome. Thank you all for your participation tonight. We're looking forward to it. The format for tonight's forum will be as follows. In keeping with current COVID-19 safety requirements, all candidates are spaced six feet apart and will be wearing masks when they're not speaking. Candidates were sent a list of potential questions in advance with the understanding that we would also take audience questions. For those in person tonight, question cards are located just inside the city council chambers. Please write down questions you may have and give them to the chamber president Krista Jek, located right over here waving her hand. And for those listening live, you may email your question to krista@lakevillechambercvb.org. That's Krista, K-R-I-S-T-A, at lakevillechambercharlesvictorbravo.org. Personal questions or questions directed to one candidate will not be accepted, and time will dictate how many questions we compose to the candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes for introductions and opening remarks, two minutes to respond to each question, and 90 seconds for wrap-up and closing remarks. A random number draw before tonight's event determine the order of the candidates. Laura Carter, over to my left, will start us off. We will then proceed clockwise with each candidate responding. With 30 seconds remaining, the timekeeper will hold up this card. And when time has expired, she will hold up this card. With each new question, we will start with the next clockwise candidate. If there are no questions, let's get started with opening remarks. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening remark. Let's begin with Laura Carter.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Carter, and I'm running for Lakeville School Board because I'm passionate about education. I believe K-12 education sets the foundation from which people change the world. I love Lakeville schools. I have a third grader and a two-and-a-half-year-old. I want to help shape the education for children who will someday change the world. In my full-time job, my clients are higher education institutions in the largest K-12 school districts across six states. On a daily basis, I discuss trends, challenges, and solutions for students of all ages. My understanding of challenges of K-12 students across the region and nation will bring a unique perspective which will help us look at challenges differently. I would like to make Lakeville School Board, I would like to, I would make a great Lakeville School Board member because I bring the voice of the parent. Education today is much different than it was 20 years ago, or even 10 years ago. Raising children today is different. I bring a fresh voice that is relevant to today's children.
Moving on to Judy Kelleher.
Good evening, and thank you to the Lakeville Area Chamber for organizing this forum. My experience as a small business owner for 25 years and currently 15 years as a regional sales director for a major national corporation is beneficial in my role on the Board of Education. Balancing reducing budgets, creating efficiencies, improving processes, negotiating, being visionary and innovative, and strengthening communications are just some of the skills needed to continuously improve the district's high academic achievement while being fiscally responsible and sustainable. You, our community, expects me to achieve positive results for our district, and I expect you to hold me accountable. My extensive community involvement and volunteering throughout the 34 years I've lived in the district plays an important role in keeping me connected to our students, parents, businesses, the trades, community leaders, and teachers across the district. I mentor high school students, helped establish ready, set, achieve. As a Lakeville Rotarian, I volunteer to raise dollars to fund scholarships and leadership programs for our students. I work with parent group, I worked with a parent group to establish a cross as our official district sport. I was actively engaged with a hockey association with Opening Ames Arena. I've initiated partnerships with Elko New Market and Lakeville Community Leaders, and I advocate at the state level for legislative changes that have positively impacted our district. I pursue my network of business and professional relationships across the industries to benefit our students, programs, and district, and I connect our students and graduates with internships and apprenticeships through mentoring programs and networking. These are just a few examples of how I advocate for you. Strengths finders 2.1, 2.0, my top five strengths are adaptability, achiever, maximizer, arranger, and strategic. And these strengths are the keys to my success at both work and in my time dedicated to serving our community.
Thank you, Judy. Moving on to Katie Roberto.
Good evening. As a daughter of parents who both committed their life's work to education, it has always been an aspiration of mine to run for school board, and I couldn't be more excited to run for school board in such an amazing district. Jermaine and I made the decision to move to Lakeville five years ago because of the strength of the schools and the growth of this community. We are the proud parents of a fifth grader named Zion, and he exists at the core of both of our worlds. I have a diverse but integrated professional career. I am an experienced project manager for a Fortune 100 company with a proven success record of implementing large-scale transformative initiatives. What is a project manager, you may ask? Well, in business, I am lovingly, sometimes lovingly, referred to as the one that gets things done. My success in this role is heavily dependent on my ability to be intentional, focused, and continuously work to find innovative solutions and strategies to implement initiatives while considering the ever-changing work environment and the unique needs of individuals and teams that I represent. I have a doctorate in business with a focus in diversity management, and I am a college educator at Century College and St. Catherine's University, teaching in both the areas of business and marketing. But most importantly, I'm an advocate, and I stand for our kids. I believe that education and the future success of our kids requires a partnership between students, teachers, parents, and community. My diverse professional background prepares me to continue the rich history of Lakeville success. Moving to Lakeville and deciding to resign here was not haphazard, it was intentional. I want to use my skills and strengths to contribute to the future success of our Lakeville community.
Thank you, Katie. Moving on to our next candidate, Teri Lind.
To quote Charles Dickens, "It's the best of times, it's the worst of times." I think this applies to the Lakeville area public schools. It is the best of times because the Lakeville community recently approved two levies to expand the curriculum offerings at the middle school level, to bring back full-time counselors at the elementary level, to provide funding to ensure that our students are safer in our classrooms, to increase our technology resources so that each child has an up-to-date device, and to provide funds to expand facilities to meet the needs of a growing student population. However, it is also the worst of times because student success, as measured by the MCAs, has had a gradual but steady decline since 2016. While our achievement levels are good, our district is no longer rated in the top 10% of Minnesota school districts. It is also the worst of times because Minnesota has one of the biggest achievements disparities in the nation, with major gaps between different student groups, and Lakeville reflects these disparities. Finally, it's the worst of times because of the challenge of COVID-19. Students have been greatly impacted, and we need to expand our efforts to meet the needs of our students academically, socially, and emotionally. We also need to assist our parents and staff, who many times face similar challenges. All of this impacts our parents and children directly. The best-of-time items gives our parents and children better schools and more opportunities, while the worst-of-time items have negative effects. This dichotomy is one of the reasons I decided to run again for school board. We need to celebrate the best-of-times accomplishments and face the worst-of-times challenges in new ways, keeping in mind that we need to be financially responsible, and equally important, keeping in mind what's best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri. Moving on to David Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. My family has lived in the district for over 16 years. My wife and I are proud parents of two awesome sons who are adopted and culturally diverse. Our younger son has severe physical and cognitive disabilities and is a sophomore at Lakeville North in the special education program. And I'd just like to say he was very excited to go back to school today. He had his lunch packed already since last Friday, so. And my older son graduated from Lakeville South two years ago. I've been a volunteer in the district as well in the community in many capacities over the years. In 2018, I was honored to receive the Friends in Education Award from the district for my volunteering. My wife also has volunteered for many years in the district and currently sits on, sits on the Community Education Advisor Council. I've been chair of the Special Ed Advisory Council for over nine years. I've also served, I've also served on the Equity Advisory Committee, the first one that they established here for integration, and also the Long Term Facility Task Force. In my community volunteering, I was a scout leader in Lakeville Troop 261, and I'm a proud parent of an Eagle Scout. And I also was a church youth leader on Wednesday nights at Hosanna. I've also been trained as a Pacer parent advocate to help special needs families. And I was recently appointed to the Minnesota's Partners in Policymaking Committee by the Governor's Council on Disabilities. I've been an attorney for over 30 years, and for 20 of those years, I negotiated contracts for Thomson Reuters. And so I believe through my professional experience. Okay, thank you. Couldn't see her warning before. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you, David Anderson. Moving on to Laura Sanders.
Hi, good evening. My name is Laura Sanders. We've been in the district for over five years and have three elementary-age students that attend Lake Marion, though this fall they will be doing Link 12 in our new environment. You know, our schools in this community are really a backbone of this community. Many of us have moved here for the schools or with the schools in consideration, like ourselves. And right now, more than ever, we, I see the need for decisive action. As a lawyer and a financial professional managing a team in a, in a large investment manager, I'd like to bring the ability to be proactive and make decisions. I think it's critical right now that we don't just address the immediate needs with the pandemic, but we keep our eye on the future. With the projected rate of growth in this district and budget constraints, there's a lot of decisions pending that need to still receive focus. Additionally, I would love to see more than just a nod to inclusion. It's become quite a buzzword lately, but I think we need some proactive measures taken so our students know that their whole being is supported and that not all students' experiences are the same. I have a diverse family, and I do understand that overlooking it or silence is not always an adequate approach. Our teachers and staff are the backbone and the foundation of our schools. I want to see that they receive the support, development, and growth opportunities so that we can have that retention in our schools. And lastly, I would like to make sure that our curriculum is being viewed by, has been looked at by experts and tried and true, and that we're not just educating to metrics, to college stats, to MCAT scores, but something larger than that. I would love to serve on this board, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. And lastly, Sarah Welcome.
Hello, I'm Sarah Welcome. I'm running as a, for school board as a parent of four children who currently attend school within the school district. My youngest starts school at Small Wonders tomorrow, so I have at least 15 more years of students within the district, so I am very vested in both the immediate, the mid-range, and the long-term success of our schools. I'm also a business leader with more than 20 years of human resources leadership experience, and as part of my professional career, I'm accustomed to helping people navigate formal and informal learning situations, planning for career development, navigating conflict resolution, as well as talent acquisition, talent planning, developing people to move into the organization. So these are very similar to the tasks that the school board is responsible for overseeing and helping come to fruition within Lakeville schools. I have a strong sense of business acumen, combined with experience in developing people's strategies to support the development of our students and our teachers. As your representative on the school board, I know that I will bring clarity of vision, diversity of thought, fresh ideas, as well as energetic leadership. Those are things that I bring to my job every day and that carries through with the school board. So I'm running as a proud member of our growing and diverse community and because I believe that we can do more to prepare our children to be successful. This is my inaugural run for any public office, and I'm excited about the opportunity to serve the amazing teachers, staff, parents, students that make Lakeville schools great. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, for your opening remarks. Before we start our first question, I would just like to remind you, for those of you who are listening live, you may email your question to krista@lakevillechambercvb.org. That's K-R-I-S-T-A, at lakevillechambercharlesvictorbravo.org. We are going to start this question with Judy Kelleher. And as a reminder, each candidate will have two minutes to answer the following. This question will be about Lakeville Works. The school district and the Chamber of Commerce have a partnership called Lakeville Works. The mission of Lakeville Works is to create awareness of in-demand careers in Lakeville. There is a large focus on the skilled trade industry. The school district has worked directly with the chamber and their members to create awareness among students, educators, and parents. What is your stance on the need for this type of program and continuation of the partnership?
Lakeville Works is a vital program to continue creating awareness of workforce needs with students and their parents. Our district's curriculum, class offerings, job fairs, and district communications have all evolved based on the work of the Lakeville Works Collaborative. I was highly involved with the initiative when the chamber and district began collaborating on the need to address this issue. I attended the meetings and continue to support the efforts of this partnership. I financially support the Chamber Foundation with events such as SUDS for Scholars and other fundraising efforts that provide scholarships to students to continue, who continue their education to strengthen their workforce and leadership skills in STEM careers. Our district has found creative ways to highlight and maintain trades programs in our schools. When Minnesota was putting educational standards in place, the trades were not included, therefore putting these programs at risk during budget cuts. We incorporated welding into our art classes, and students created beautiful metal sculptures that were displayed around the school. We are able to keep the trades relevant as part of the required art standards. And the district continues to think outside the box with combining programs to make classes and learnings more engaging for our students. Another example of this is how our teachers have mechanical engineering partnered with geometry. Combined classes such as these help to elevate the learning of all of our students.
Thank you, Judy. Moving on to Katie Roberto.
So first off, let me start by saying I'm a huge supporter of Lakeville Works. I teach at Century College, which is a community and technical college, and conversations around skilled trades is a regular part of our dialogues each day. In a public opinion poll of skilled trade programs in high schools that was published just this May, 79% of parents believe their child would be more prepared for a career if they had a chance to study a trade in high school. Additionally, 72% of students say high schools could do a better job of giving them chances to learn real-world skills. And 80% of voters describe the trades as important. So the numbers speak for themselves. These programs are important and are a necessity to support our growing workforce. I would also advocate that we invest some time in reframing the message around involvement in the skills trade industry because there has been an unfortunate negative stigma against opportunities within skilled trade. It is not an either-or, it's an and. Students should have the options to explore all the career pathways that are available to them, whether it's a four-year degree, a two-year degree, exploring certification or apprenticeship options, or moving directly into the workforce. The option is not, the option to not continue with Lakeville Works is non-negotiable. We have to.
Thank you, Katie Roberto. Moving on to Teri Lind.
I think the Lakeville Works is a program that is crucial and meets a definite need in Lakeville. For example, when our seniors graduate, a majority of them go to a four-year college. However, over a third of them do not finish but drop out. I have visited with many of these Lakeville graduates and have asked them what happened. The majority of the responses were college wasn't what they thought it would be. They enrolled in college for a number of reasons that I think are problematic, including their family expected them to go to college, all their friends were going, and there was peer pressure to go because if you didn't, you could never get ahead in the world. It's unfortunate that this happened to these graduates. My feeling is if they experienced a program like Lakeville Works and learned about the great opportunities that were present in the skilled trade industry, this might have led to different choices for these students. Yet, I do think society is slowly changing its view of post-high school education, seeing that there are many more opportunities for successful careers without having a four-year degree. Lakeville Works provides opportunities for students to explore a number of professions to include business and marketing, health and education, hospitality, technology, transportation, manufacturing, and construction. More specifically, the technology field, there are careers like solar power, robotics, and home automation. Not only does Lakeville Works provide awareness of in-demand careers, they even hire students to experience work in these areas so they can decide if they are making the right choice. In summary, I would like to see the efforts of Lakeville Works expand even more in our schools so that every high school student is made aware that there are other high-demand, high-pay career opportunities that do not require a four-year degree. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri Lind. Moving on to our next candidate, David Anderson.
Thank you. First, I think it's vital to continue and expand these vocational educational opportunities whenever possible because there's great potential there, because not all kids will succeed going to a traditional college, but can thrive developing these type of skills before they graduate from high school. Job shadowing is also an important concept with this, and I think that should be expanded to give more opportunity for kids to learn about as many different types of jobs in the community as possible. I think also the school district working with DCTC in developing more job-type of training programs, whether in school instead of just after school, would help these students prepare for these jobs when they get out of high school. Second, I'm a big fan of involving the community and local businesses in our schools in this way. It's a really win-win. The schools get a quality training resource often not feasible within the school's budget, and the local industry gets interns as well as career candidates trained with the skillsets they need. I think one of the biggest goals of the program should be to improve communication to the parents and kids on how this great program works and the multiple opportunities through local informational meetings with parents and students. More information on the school, on the school district website, periodic emails to every grade level in, in high school would help for these students to take advantage of this. Thank you.
Thank you, David Anderson. Next, Laura Sanders.
The Lakeville Works program is, is a wonderful program, and I think really imperative that we keep partnerships like this with the community. To echo what many of the other candidates have stated, there's certainly a need for skills training. We really need to focus on the whole student when we look at our schools and our education, not just the statistics of college, because we do know, as others have stated, that that's not the end goal or the end path for many people, and there are fabulous skilled jobs out there that, that need a workforce. But I think more importantly, the community support of our youth is, is just really important to their development. And I had the opportunity to visit Lakeville South High School in their STEM area and watch some of these students producing things that were going to be used in the town. And I actually got goosebumps while I was there, looking at the pride that they had. They had learned the technology, they had learned a skill, and these were going to be used in the community as a benefit. And the pride and engagement of those students was just really heartwarming to see. So it's so nice to have those programs, and I, I think it's engaging for the community as well because, you know, our schools really have been a backbone of this community, and to have that interaction and not just silo our students, and again, teach to the whole student, not just whether they're going to attend college or not, or for the college students, that they have exposure that many of us didn't get to receive as part of our education. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Sanders. And moving on to Sarah Welcome.
I support the Lakeville Works partnership. As a human resources professional, one of my key responsibilities is to help create talent pipelines for my organization, avenues for finding and attracting and hiring new employees. And partnerships like Lakeville Works are beneficial for both us as an employer as well as the participants in the program. I've partnered already with similar programs to Lakeville Works as part of my job. As an employer, my success in my business is often dependent upon hiring and developing good people to help the business succeed. And without those talent pipelines, without access to employees, potential employees, I often have to make difficult choices about where and how to grow the business. It's also important for our students to know that college is only one of the many choices that they have, and that college may not be the right choice for everyone. It's crucial to teach our students about the possible career paths, including the skilled trades. Skilled trade jobs are often a rewarding career path with great financial rewards as well for in-demand skills. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah Welcome. Before we move on to our next question, I just want.
Can I answer the question?
Oh, excuse me, yes. Laura Carter, please.
Thank you. I, I agree with the other candidates. I think the Lakeville Works program is great. One thing that you may not know is that many students that are graduating from high school and college don't have basic Microsoft Office skills. This means that these students don't know how to use Microsoft Word or Excel. They simply don't know you need to save a document. Many corporations are including training on sessions on how to use basic computer skills as part of the new hire onboarding process for recent college graduates. I know this because the company that I work for includes this as part of their onboarding program. This is just one example of a lack of skillset that may be identified through a stronger partnership. partnership. There's definitely a need for the continuation and strengthening of partnerships. I would also like to see us educate students, educators, and parents on what jobs in the trade look like today, because I think they're different. I think they use technology more than they ever have, and I think that these jobs may be more attractive to our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Carter. Before we move on to our second question, I would just want to again repeat for those folks listening live that you may email your question to krista@lakevillechambercvb.org. That's K-R-I-S-T-A at lakevillechambercharlevictorbravo.org. The second question is about workforce. Again, each candidate will have two minutes to answer. "Lakeville is a growing and thriving community with businesses increasingly struggling to find workers. Demographic trends only increase this problem into the future. What would you change or improve in the curriculum to better equip students with the skills needed in today's workforce?" And we'll begin with Katie Roberto.
Thank you. Well, first of all, it pains me that any business owner cannot find competent and skilled workers. I hear this conversation a lot, not only within the company that I work for, but amongst some of my students who own their own businesses, along with family members that own their own businesses. And it's only a matter of time before they start to feel the pain of the shortage. With that said, I am a proponent of addressing the worker shortage by bringing all stakeholders to the table with the goal of solving this issue collaboratively. Business owners and industry leaders need to inform our teachers on what is missing in the labor market. The more specificity that we can get from our businesses and industry leaders, the stronger the talent in Lakeville will be. Additionally, teachers need to share what they're seeing in the classroom. Are we seeing more creative students? Are they excelling in group work? What are students even talking about nowadays? How can we maintain an element of relevancy? We want our educators to send out students that are prepared. Actually, we want them to be beyond prepared. We also want to get students thinking about what's available out there. What are my strengths? And how can I make these connections with my strengths and the available opportunities in the community that I live in? By creating more deliberate, intentional communication, we can start shifting the curriculum and subsequently the workforce real-time. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie Roberto. Let's move on to Teri Lind.
I don't really think that we need to change the curriculum, but instead change the way the curriculum is delivered. There are many skills needed in today's workforce that we can do and develop in the district curriculum, yet more needs to be done. The skills that I feel are extremely important include interpersonal skills so that students can work as a team, the ability to acquire, interpret, and evaluate data, the ability to understand social and organizational systems, finally, the development of critical thinking and problem-solving skills. This is something that we're trying to accomplish in the district initiatives like STEM, the Business Academy, and other programs. However, I can think of two ways of curriculum delivery that would provide these workforce skills in the regular classroom. One, inquiry-based learning. This starts by posing questions or problems rather than simply presenting facts. The process involves making observations, doing research, collecting data, interpreting data, and creating predictions. Students learn the critical thinking and problem-solving skills they, they need in today's workforce. Two, project-based learning is another teaching strategy that can be used in the regular classroom. It is a method in which students actively explore real-world problems and challenges to acquire a deeper knowledge. Students learn about the subject by working for an extended period of time, investigating and responding to complex challenges or problems. Many times, students work as a team, which helps develop the interpersonal skills they need for future employment. So in summary, I feel that the inquiry-based learning and project-based learning are two ways to teach workforce skills in our regular classrooms.
Thank you, Teri Lind. And next, we have David Anderson.
I think maximizing the benefits of local industry input can be incredibly beneficial in two ways to this type of program. Businesses as partners at the table can point out holes and evolution we need to reflect in our existing traditional school curriculum offerings, from STEM to vocational offerings to even expectations to technical savvy skills coming into inter滴滴 jobs that a lot of our graduates need these days. I think businesses can develop, working with the schools and businesses, they can develop more internships, mentorship programs, summer employment, and other engaging programs to directly introduce students to employment expectations, as well expose them to the type of careers and skill sets needed for those jobs in demand. Students could get invaluable training, working alongside skilled labor in many fields like construction, plumbing, electricians, and auto mechanics, as many others, as well as many others. An educational approach that many students would prefer to than sitting in a classroom. I also think inviting business owners to be adjunct faculty at the school to teach classes during the year would also help expose students to real-world type of training. I mean, they do it in colleges all the time, and I think they can just bring, I think it would be great just to bring it down to the high school. And bonus, and as a bonus, internships and part-time employment that provides some pay as well as school credit might be quite popular, especially in the traditional classroom, is already changing in our society. Thank you.
Thank you, David Anderson. Moving on to Laura Sanders.
I think, harkening back to what I mentioned earlier, I think teaching to the whole student is the goal of our school, not just the metric. And, you know, this, we need opportunities so that our students are set up for success in their post-graduation years, regardless of what that looks like. And in doing so, we would set them up to be productive members in all sorts of different industries. It would be great to see training and maybe some more partnerships with local businesses because I do think in current curriculums in general that kids are not necessarily taught interpersonal skills. They're not taught how to come to the table at an organization, and sometimes they're not taught sort of basic technology and customer service and other type of elements that go into this. I would love to see some partnerships with local businesses where there is a mutual benefit and it stays within our community as well. I also think these opportunities can be very engaging. Whether it determines a student's future or not, it helps keep the student engaged. Certainly, any real-world opportunities we could give them, looking at trends, particularly where needs are in the community, would also be very helpful. And if nothing else, just giving real-life skills to our students is a vital component that I think can be overlooked when we're looking at the metrics and we're publishing the college acceptance rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Sanders. Next, we have Sarah, welcome.
As a human resources professional, I'm accustomed to looking for people to enter our business, especially newly entered into the workforce. So I'm aware of the skills gap and what I would like to see closed as an employer. I believe that it's important, our curriculum includes for our students to know that it's not, college is just one of many choices, and it may not be the right choice for everyone. So it's crucial that we teach students about the possible career paths, including the skilled trades, technical skill ones, college ones, professional, all of those. So those partnerships with local employers can help provide relevant overviews of those careers so our students can make better choices as far as what interests them. The second piece is, as a school district, we need to be intentional in how we seek input from business leaders in our area to understand the emerging trends so that we can adjust our school curriculum to help our, prepare our students when they graduate. That may be technology-focused, social-emotional skill-focused, or just an overall well-roundedness preparing them for STEM careers or other activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, welcome. Our next candidate, Laura Carter.
Sixty-five percent of children entering kindergarten today will end up working in jobs that don't even exist yet. I think we not only need to have a stronger focus on our STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math curriculum, but we also need to ha, speak to our students differently to help them find what they are passionate about. If you haven't, I encourage you to watch the ISTE-19 TED Talk by engineer Aspen Menneke. She talks about helping students find their spark and then using creativity and innovation to apply that spark to solve a problem. And this is the creativity and innovation that will, that will be needed in the 21st century jobs. So I think we need to focus on STEM curriculum, as well as we need to talk to our students differently to help them find what they are passionate about and how they might be able to solve a problem.
Thank you, Laura Carter. And next, Judy Kelleher.
Addressing the issue of the struggle to find workers relates to the importance of addressing the education imperative and developing an equitable curriculum and sustainable programs that prepare students to fill workforce needs. Critical thinking, problem-solving, communication, and collaboration are skills that are needed to effectively function in today's work environment. Science, math, and technology helps to develop these skills. I have been and will continue to be committed to partnering with businesses, the trades, and higher education to expand educational opportunities for our students that provide real-life experiences and del, develop workforce solutions. There is also a benefit with investing in closing the educational achievement gap. Policies and curriculum that narrow the achievement gap will help to increase the highly-skilled workforce that our community needs and handle the rapid growth in the global economic competition that we all are seeing. Strengthening and evolving programs such as Lakeville Works, creating awareness and demonstrating the need for workers while highlighting the high-paying jobs that can be found in the various industries and trades, is essential to driving interest and a desire for parent, for students to want to take these classes. Our classes are driven by enrollment and, and registration, so we need to continue to offer the classes, drive interest, and keep them in our program offerings. Delivering a blend of hands-on, in-the-classroom, online, and real-life learnings engage our students, resulting in improved educational outcomes.
Thank you, Judy Kelleher. The next question we have is about mental illness. And as a reminder, each candidate will have two minutes to answer. We are going to begin with Teri Lind, and the question is, "Mental illness continues to be in the forefront of many conversations around education today. What role and responsibilities do you feel the school district has in addressing this topic among our youth?"
I agree that the social-emotional wellness of our students is a major concern. The pandemic that we're facing today has made the situation even worse. COVID-19 has affected all of us in negative ways, including increasing stress on our school families. The reality of the situation is that if our students are experiencing stress, they will have a more difficult time being successful in school. One way that a school district can reduce the stress is through social-emotional learning. SCL is meant to be preventative, giving students the tools to positively deal with a number of situations. Skill areas include making friends, dealing with conflict, reacting to bullying and peer pressure, being positive about yourself, respecting others, managing emotions, setting and achieving positive goals, feeling and showing empathy for others, establishing and maintaining positive relationships, and making responsible decisions. The district has made great strides in recent years to embed SCL in the curriculum and is planning more for the future. Even though prevention through SCL is critical, we also still need to assist those who are struggling now. A few years ago, we added student support specialists at the secondary level, in part to assist these struggling students. This year, we're able to make elementary school counselors full-time so they can provide more student support. District staff also serve as resources for children with clinical needs, providing advice to parents on choosing the right clinic for their child. Finally, there are co-located mental health service providers in the schools for students who have barriers that prevent them from getting to a clinic. In summary, I feel that the school district should continue to provide this two-pronged approach that is both preventative but also supportive of those already struggling with mental health issues.
Thank you, Teri Lind. Our next candidate, David Anderson.
This is a pretty personal issue for me because I deal with a lot of families in the district when I'm trying to help them as parent liaison. And I, I think we have to be careful to state the question as mental illness because it, it's a, it's a stigma that prevents families and, and kids from getting help as it is. So, the mental health, the mental health of, is an integral part of the child's well-being and their ability to learn. If they're not mentally and socially healthy, they're not going to become a productive member of society. Many news stories that I've read lately, not just locally, the main concern we all have right now is going back to the school during the pandemic is actually their, the social and emotional mental health of our children. I think the school district plays a vital role in helping to foster the mental health well-being of all its students and staff, and even the, even to support the families. And to appropriately step in where need, where we need to help with the mental health and social-emotional needs of students where we can do that. The school district now, more than ever, needs to be proactive in reacting to and training its staff on signs and behaviors of children coming back to school and having to deal with the anxiety of the virus and, and, and what techniques and solutions will best resolve these issues. Especially in the last seven months with the virus causing a lot of isolation anxiety for students, teachers, and parents, that the district needs to have some training and support programs to teach all of these groups how to better deal with this situation. This year, there were more counselors hired onboard to assist in this, but I think we need to look at hiring some more counselors at the secondary level to help, as well as to provide some online resources for families that are learning at home or are doing the online, online learning. The schools need to develop a comprehensive mental health crisis plan. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David Anderson. Moving on to our next candidate, Laura Sanders.
Oh, mental health and mental illness in particular are really difficult areas, and it can be a hard conversation between what is the responsibility at home and what is the responsibility that falls to the schools. But the truth is that mental health is intricately tied to a student's well-being. And students' well-being are not only a concern, but they impact the whole school environment as well. So it does need to be a priority. The district has added a lot of personnel and resources in its schools, and I think it's done a good job with that. I, I've noticed many new positions in the schools to address these needs. I've even witnessed it firsthand where there will be staff intervention if a student is struggling at the lower levels, perhaps with friends. So I'm not sure that, how to act proactively. I think we need to utilize the resources that we have in the best way possible. And what does that mean? That means training, adequate training, not just for those resource, resource personnel, but I think our teachers should have training as well so that they can identify the signs of individuals in their classroom that might not otherwise come to recognition of the professionals. And hand-in-hand, I think we also need communication among our families of the district so that they know what's available. Certainly, as a child grows, as a student grows, you know, they may not be communicating with their parent as much, and we need to make sure we have clear communication with the families to show what is available and how the resources that we have can be best utilized within the buildings during the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Sanders. Our next candidate, Sarah, welcome.
We can all agree that schools need to be a safe place for our students, teachers, and staff. One in five youth have mental health concerns, so it's a very real issue in our schools and many others. Our teachers, counselors, and other staff members need to have the training and resources to recognize when a student may need additional support. Teachers are an important in-school factor affecting student achievement and recognizing where there may be a mental health concern. Lakeville needs, and our children deserve, the best teacher workforce in the world, one that's held in high regards by our citizens, recruited from among the best and the brightest, well-trained, supported on the job, and competitively compensated for their effectiveness and hard work. Teachers and instructional teams must have the professional development, the time, the collaboration and training resources to understand each student's learning needs in order to match those instructions, time, and attention necessary to help the student. Our schools need strong leaders to support each teacher's growth and to recognize resources in a way that enable them to work together for a great school. Our curriculum in schools needs to help students develop healthy habits, awareness of mental and emotional health, and an acceptance for seeking expert help when needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Welcome. Our next candidate, Laura Carter.
According to the World Health Organization, half of all mental health conditions start by age 14 years. But most cases are undetected and untreated. The consequences of not addressing adolescent mental health conditions extend into adulthood, impairing both physical and mental health and limiting opportunities to lead fulfilling lives as adults. It is for these reasons that I believe that our schools have a responsibility to identify these students early that may have mental illness. I also agree that we need to fully communicate with parents and resources that may be further available to these students and help them find resources within our community to help address the needs to make them have fulfilling lives as adults. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Carter. And next, our candidate, Judy Kelleher.
Mental health is a primary focus within our district. The district is investing in social-emotional and behavioral learnings that develop the child as a whole. Grant monies have been received and invested in Dr. Clay Cook from the University of Minnesota to work with our district. Part of this is to train and help our teachers and staff members to develop meaningful relationships with our students. Our community approved funding for the most recent levy referendum that allowed the district to increase resources such as guidance counselors, a psychologist to help facilitate a comprehensive district-wide threat assessment team, and middle-level support and teaming. As the board was discussing what was needed to include this in the recent levy referendum, I voiced my concerns that it was imperative for us to include the funding for the additional resources now because the mental health of our children impacts their education. The district also partners with third-party behavioral and mental health organizations to assist students and families so our teachers can focus on teaching. I'm an advocate for co-curricular activities as well, speech, DECA, faith groups, sports, and fine arts in our schools. Co-curricular activities help develop the well-rounded students beyond the classroom. In addition, it puts them into activities that are safe and healthy endeavors for them and connects them with other adults. The district plays a role in addressing mental health in our system. The mental health state of the child impacts their learning and the educational outcomes. Therefore, it is vital for the district to assist students and families to provide and find resources that are necessary for them to succeed.
Thank you, Judy Kelleher. And lastly, we have Katie Roberto.
Thank you. So the other night, a stat was released by the CDC and that the rate of death by suicide in people ages 10 to 24 increased by 57.4% over the span of 10 years. And I couldn't decide what was most alarming to me. Was it the rate of increase or was it the age? Because my son is 10. And so when I processed that, all I could think about was it is, mental health is a variable that we have to consider and we cannot ignore it. Educating the whole student includes their mental, emotional, and physical well-being. We have a responsibility in understanding and addressing the factors that interfere with students' learning. For example, COVID, families are struggling right now. We're all struggling with creating a healthy work environment and a learning environment for ourselves and for our kids. I know I am as I balance work, my dogs, and my kid. The reality is that people are trying to cope. We're all trying to cope with what we're facing. But the question remains is how does this impact the ability for our children to learn? I don't have all the answers, but I do know that we can't ignore it. What this means is that we want to equip our teachers, staff, parents, and community members and provide resources collectively to the best of our ability so that when students are with us, we can engage them and understand what could be preventing them from learning. I do want to echo that it's not just the responsibility of our teachers. We all play a role in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie Roberto. We will now move to questions from our audience. Each candidate, again, will have two minutes to answer the following question, and we will begin with David Anderson. The question is, "How willing are you to bring about policies that adapt to the changing data regarding COVID-19? Or are you more inclined toward resuming school and classes as it was before the pandemic?"
Can you repeat the question one more time, please?
How willing are you to bring about policies that adapt to the changing data regarding COVID-19? Or are you more inclined toward resuming school and classes as it was before the pandemic?
Well, I think the important part there is we have to be flexible and we have to adapt to the ever-changing environment we have with the virus. I mean, it changes every day. So you can't really just take one over the other. Of course, I'd like the kids to be back in school full-time. I think that that, you know, there are certain kids that want to learn online that have signed up for online learning. That's great. But I think we can't ignore the, you know, the safety aspect of COVID-19. And so we have to adapt a policy to deal with that. And it's kind of abstract to talk about right now because just in the last two or three weeks, the school district has had to change the policy several times on how we're going to do online learning, how we're going to do K to 12. You know, what are there going to be the changes if the virus numbers, if they go up? So I'm not going to give a, I'm not going to give a one or the other type of answer. I think you have to be flexible and you have to study the data and listen to the experts and listen to the community and listen to the other board members and the school district administration and the teachers. So, thank you.
Thank you, David Anderson. Moving on to Laura Sanders.
Yes, I would also agree that there's a measure of flexibility and fluidity that is needed in this situation. I don't think, you know, I think there's a clear choice that new policies will have to come to fruition and potentially frequently as the numbers change. We do have an obligation to keep our students and staff safe to the best of our ability and manage education at the same time, which is surely a huge challenge as everyone sees right now. There may be an end goal of going back to where we were, certainly, but I don't think that's in the near future. And certainly, we have to look at the current numbers, how things are spreading, how things are currently working in the classroom as everyone goes back to school, and be willing to adopt new policies. I'm very happy that in-person instruction, even though my family didn't opt for it, is available because I think for so many families and so many students, being in person is really, really important. And I'd love to see that we can continue that unless, you know, the pandemic really prevents it. However, we have to be flexible in seeing what the safety requirements are, how many people can congregate, you know, cleanliness measures and things like that. And of course, the teacher perspective, you know, I think this is where the teacher and staff perspective and what they're seeing in the schools would be really beneficial to hear in formulating policies as we go forward in uncharted territory. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Sanders. Moving on to Sarah, welcome.
As an employer in the local community who is deemed essential, we had to make decisions all the way through the pandemic as far as having people at work safely in order to meet the needs of our customers. So I'm accustomed to navigating that, relying on science-based decisions. I feel that we should always have a distance-learning option, as Lakeville schools had did long before the pandemic started. But at the same time, we know that our children learn best while at school. Most children learn best while at school. And if you're not sure on that, you should join a three-year-old preschool Zoom call or WebEx call to understand they were learning better in the classroom. What we did this past spring was nothing short of phenomenal, but it was more crisis learning as opposed to the best of the best. So that I hope that we can get our students and our staff back to school full-time as soon as possible. The hybrid learning approach works kind of, but it's really tough on our teachers to figure out how to be at two places at once. It's also tough on parents and on students. So I'd like to get everybody back to school as safely as reasonably possible in order to allow the best learning to take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Welcome. Moving on to our next candidate, Laura Carter.
I would like to see my student back in school five days a week. I think that's where she learns best. I think that students that are in a social setting have better mental health. And I have concerns about the hybrid and link 12 options that are the only options today. While I think that they're best for some families, I like that there is a choice for those families, but there wasn't the choice for the families that wanted to send their kids back full-time. I think we need to admit that there's going to be lifelong impact academically on this generation, not only in Lakeville but across the country and the world because there are students that simply were not taught in the spring and potentially this fall because they don't have access to the internet or to a device. Thankfully, Lakeville has solved that problem, but there are students that are struggling to meet the minimum standards and may have to repeat a grade. And I think the best place for students to learn is in the classroom. So my goal is to get them back there as fast as possible in a safe manner for everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Carter. Moving on to candidate Judy Kelleher.
So education is a collaborative effort between the student, the family, the school, and our community. And it's important for me to continue to seek your participation when making significant district decisions. All voices are needed to provide input so that the solutions and the educational outcomes reflect our community. And so when it comes to this, it is important that the data that's being talked about also includes surveys of our families and our teachers, which we have done, and making sure that the decisions that are made, you know, that we're being sensitive to all of the family situations and provide a variety of options so that the families can make the best decision for them in these very trying times. It is important for us to be able to be flexible in the learning space. Our teachers have done an incredible job. Our parents and our families have done an incredible job. I have a team that covers 10 states across the United States, and they all have, many of them, most of them have kids that are all dealing with this, and they're trying to figure out how to balance their work-life doing the job for our company as well as educating their child. And it is very trying. As far as policies, you know, we have to be sensitive that you don't just put policies in place to put policies in place. You know, we have to question to make sure that they are supporting and improving the educational environment. And the purpose of the policies that we work on do just that. And all decisions have to be made with the student focus in mind. And no doubt, the classroom is the place for our students. But in an environment where that's not possible, we need our families to have options to make their decisions.
Thank you, Judy Kelleher. Next, we have Katie Roberto.
Thank you. So I think it's first to, it's important to first acknowledge that I don't believe that the district just decided to make these changes. I think, I echo what everybody's saying. It was flexibility. It was a requirement. So there are some things that we as a district have to support and have to make decisions to support. Also, I think it's important to acknowledge that our education system wasn't built to support this kind of model. So now, for the first time in history, not only are businesses dealing with this, but we have an unchanged education system that is developing and learning as they go and transforming the way they're delivering. And that's a difficult thing to do. And so it definitely requires grace. It definitely requires flexibility. And I don't envy any teacher or any leader in this district that's in this position right now to make these decisions. They're hard. They're very hard. In reference to policy, I think that's a great question. I also think it's a hard question. I think that we would be remiss if we didn't take the time when we get to some kind of lull, hoping that we get to some kind of lull, that we don't take a look at what's transpired and take advantage of some of these great learnings that we've had and some of the transformation that we have. Because I believe in this experience, we've learned a lot of really good lessons and we've seen a lot of change that has transpired. So it's proving that we can have massive innovation in education. And so I think that the policies will come, but we first have to assess what we've learned and what's worked and what hasn't worked. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie Roberto. And lastly, candidate Teri Lind.
Policies are kind of long-term things. Procedures are the way that you carry out policies. And right now, things are changing continually, and we can't keep up with the procedures. We can't keep up with the state changes. So policy will come, I think, after things settle down a little bit. The choice of the hybrid, of course, is really governed by guidelines provided by the state. If we wanted to go back full-time in the classroom with our children, we couldn't do it under the guidelines. We only have two choices: hybrid and online learning. The hybrid is really hard, and it's tough on staff, and it's tough on parents and students. Preparing for that is requiring much more time than our teachers would normally use to get ready for school. If things regress, we'll be back online. However, part of the question was, will we go back to classes as we had it before? No. We've learned too much about technology and its use. We've learned too much that would, I don't think we're going to go back to just a regular classroom like it was before. There'll be improvements in that classroom because all the things that we're learning over these past months. We'll have, in spite of the adversity, we're going to have a better school system, a better way of delivering curriculum to kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri Lind. Moving on to our next audience question, again, each candidate will have two minutes to answer the following. Given likely funding challenges in the future, are you likely to support increased taxes or budget cuts to balance the budget? And we will start with candidate Laura Sanders.
Yeah, so taxes and levies are very unpopular, I think, questions for obvious reasons. Nobody likes additional taxes. Even I don't like additional taxes. But, you know, I think when we look at the economics, at the financial outlook, which I would look to our experts for, you know, I think that an additional tax or even another levy would be more of a last resort just to prevent stealing from Peter to pay Paul. But I don't want to compromise the integrity of our schools. We have a lot of folks moving here for the schools. That's what's bringing in so much of the projected growth is that we can claim we have these great schools. So if there weren't other options... So if there weren't other options to reallocate or to come up with the budget money, I don't think it's out of the question, if that's what the balance sheet shows, that there could potentially be increases needed to support it. Again, I don't think that would be a first or second, or maybe even third option that we would look at, but, you know, with our growth, if we don't have that support to continue our initiatives and support our, our schools the way that they need to be supported, I don't think it's off the table that it would have to happen in the next, let's say, three to five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Sanders. Moving on to our next candidate, Sarah, welcome.
Predictability in revenue collection is why most public schools still choose to rely on property taxes versus other income streams. So as a community, we also benefit when our schools do well. Lakeville's growing, and with that growth comes additional demands on our schools. We need to ensure that we continue to have the same strong academics and diverse enrichment activities to develop good citizens from our schools. These programs do come at a cost, and property taxes are not our only means to continue to offer these excellent curriculum and program offerings, but they are part of the funding equation. So during this time of growth in Lakeville, with the revenue that's coming in, we need to be mindful and planful of our long-term, because there were times back in the Lakeville schools, not so recent history, where there was all kinds of budget cuts that were being done. So these kind of funding equations do not have just one simple answer, and it ultimately depends on us looking at multiple resources and finding the best way to balance the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Welcome. Moving on to our next candidate, Laura Carter.
I believe our first goal needs to be investing in our students, investing to make them positive contributions, contributors as adults in our community. I believe in being fiscally responsible, and I believe in finding ways that we can potentially be more efficient with what we're doing, is there a way that we can do something with less that we've always done. And I think that it's fair for us to continue to look at how we've done things and ask ourselves if there's a better way to do it, maybe a more cost-effective way to do it in the future. I think we definitely need to look at long-term strategy, long-term planning. Obviously, there's a lot of growth within Lakeville, new houses, new tax revenue that way, but I think if we're, we plan long-term, there'll be less of a need for tax increases and levies because we've been able to be planful with the resources that we already have. One thing that often go amiss, I think, in public schools is around fundraisers. I know Lake Marion, where, where my daughter has gone, has fantastic fundraisers, and that's really an initiative of the PTO, and I know that it has supplemented the school in many ways, and I encourage us, even as a public organization, to work together as a community to invest in our schools. And finally, I think taxes and levies need to be a last resort. Sometimes they're necessary as we grow, as we need to meet short-term demands, lots of new students coming with the new housing, and it may be necessary, but it needs to be a last resort. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Carter. Moving on to our next candidate, Judy Kelleher.
So analyzing the educational programs and the effectiveness of our operations is critical, and it allows us to reprioritize and redirect our valuable resources without needing to ask our community for additional funding. Board members must be responsible for managing the budget, implementing sustainable programs, and monitoring, monitoring the data to evaluate and track the success and progress toward our strategic plan. And I support the effort to continue to address our long-term facility needs and maintenance, the expansion of quality programming, providing safe and secure buildings, and supporting a high-quality workforce while minimizing the overall tax impact to our community and our businesses. Improving and expanding curriculum and programs as well as our facilities draws families to move here and entices our visitors to our community and generate activity for our businesses and bolster our local economy, but the first solution is not going to the taxpayer. It must, we must, as a board, must be willing to make tough decisions based on what's best for the district while being student-focused. And if the board does its due diligence, and it's at the point of making a significant decision, seeking the community input to help determine the direction of the district is vital, but it is a last resort after we've done our job to manage the budget.
Thank you, Judy Kelleher. Our next candidate, Katie Roberto.
Thank you. So first and foremost, our goal should always be to provide the best quality level of education we can provide, and that shouldn't be dependent upon where we live. So I think in Lakeville, we can't ignore the growing population. There's not a night that my neighbors aren't having a conversation on when are all, where are all these kids going to go? They're everywhere, where are they going to go? So I think we can look at this in, in a micro issue and a macro issue, and in how we plan. And as a project manager, I know that the micro issues become macro issues if they're ignored, and so it's that adage, pay now, pay later. So echoing what I've heard, the important part is how are we planning? How are we looking? How are we monitoring trends? How are we best utilizing the funds that we currently have? How are we exploring all the options that are available to us and making the best decisions? And sometimes those decisions will require asking for more money. They will require looking at different, difficult decisions in reference to zoning, in reference to boundaries, in reference to all those unspoken things that we don't really want to talk about, but what keep our schools running. So as a daughter of a superintendent, I was always told, you have to be concerned about what's happening in the schools because it directly impacts your community. And even if you don't have kids in the district or current kids in the district, the success of the schools impacts your property value. And so again, I think if we keep our students at the focus and what's best for them, and then explore all the options, we have to make the best decision possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie Roberto. Moving on to our next candidate, Teri Lind.
First, I'd like to say that our community has provided amazing support to the Lakeville schools. A year ago, both a bond and levy referendum were approved that provided funding for a number of needs. I deeply appreciate the support that the community provided our schools. In regards to additional funding, I feel that the district should continue to look at future challenges that would impact our financial status and plan and prepare now for these challenges. We need to keep in mind that we want to be physically, financially responsible and not ask for increased property taxes if at all possible. The state of Minnesota is already projecting nearly a $5 billion shortfall over the next biennium. This will definitely impact our schools, and we need to prepare for it now so that stakeholders are not negatively affected. The district is already doing this by looking at ways to reduce expenditures, refinancing capital bonds at lower rates, and ensuring that we have a healthy fund balance. However, I see there is one instance in the near future where the school district may need to ask the public for additional funding. We are a growing district, especially at the elementary level. Currently, we are trying to accommodate this growth by adding small additions onto our elementary schools. Yet projections indicate we will outgrow even these additions in three to four years, and at some point, we may need to ask our community for funding to build a new elementary school. In short, outside of seeking funds for a new school, I feel that we need to continue our efforts at reducing costs, keeping in mind the state of Minnesota's future revenue challenges. We need to be ready for this and not impact property taxes because we didn't plan for these state shortages.
Thank you, Teri Lind. And finally, our next candidate, David Anderson.
Well, I, I agree with Teri that the community has been very supportive over the last few years with raising the levies to support the education action plans of the board. But I think we also have to be very careful not to go back to the taxpayers, you know, every year with a levy. I think they become wary, and especially at a time of job loss, the debt we're having at both the local and state level, and, and the job, and, in the tax increase from last year. So I think we can all say it's, it's great, we need to plan, and we need to do this and everything, but we really don't, in this time of the COVID virus, we really don't know where we're going to be going in the next two or three months. Costs are going up. I think you just have to be adept at, and flexible at dealing with those situations, and do, and if costs have to be cut, they have to be cut, but I, I think there's a balancing act, and it's hard to say right now how things are going to be, how that's going to go forward. Ideally, the legislature, the state legislature should be supporting our school districts more than they are, but with, like Teri said, with more, more of the, more of the tax, more of the debt that's going to be occurring over the next couple of years, it'll be hard to go to them for help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David Anderson. Now, each candidate will have 90 seconds for their closing remarks. Sarah, welcome. Will you please begin?
As a parent of four children that are enrolled in the Lakeville School District, starting at the Small Wonders all the way up and a number of years ahead of me, having students participate in Lakeville schools, I care very much about our long-term success as a school, being planful and having a strategic plan, being planful in meeting the immediate needs that are arising from the COVID crisis, et cetera. My human resources leadership experience dovetails very nicely with what a school board leader needs to do as far as being able to understand learning situations, help plan for career development for both our students and our staff, being able to navigate conflict resolutions, talent development strategies, et cetera. I have a strong and proven sense of business acumen, and I've been successful in my professional career. I'm now a human resource leader at a Lakeville-based company, so I have a double-vested interest in that. So I believe that as a school board member, I'll be able to serve the amazing teachers, staff, parents, and students that make Lakeville schools great. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Welcome. Our next candidate, Laura Carter.
We are facing unprecedented times. Our first goal needs to be to work together to get students, faculty, and staff into the classrooms full-time. I agree, learning of the future is going to look different. I work in technology and have conversations about technology every day and understand that it's changing our world before our eyes. None of us is smarter than all of us, and my plan is to work together, the board, the community, faculty, staff, local businesses, local colleges and universities, and others to help prepare the students for the future. My unique perspective of being the parent of a young student allows me to see firsthand the pressures and struggles of young students today. Also, working directly with other K-12 schools, colleges, and universities across the region allows me to potentially offer a different lens to our situations. Lakeville schools are fantastic. It's the reason me and my family moved here as well. I'm here to roll up my sleeves and make them even better and help our next generation for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Carter. And next, we have Judy Kelleher.
Advocating for you is a privilege and an honor. As a current Board of Education member, I am humbled by the trust and support I receive from you. We have a district that we can all be very proud of, and it hasn't been possible without your voice, your involvement, and your support. My priorities are quality and equitable education for all students, parent and community engagement, and accountability. More details are available at my website at www.reelectjudykelleher.com, and I am committed to providing high-quality equitable programs and expanded opportunities to meet the needs of our students by prioritizing funding in safe and secure educational and work environments so the focus is on learning. Partnering with businesses, the trades, and higher education is essential to provide real-life experiences resulting in more engaged students in order to prepare them for their future and success after graduation. By working together, we can manage through challenges and address the individual needs of every student so that they value, they become valued in participating in our global economies. The real success is when our graduates are graduate, are engaged citizens and become productive contributing members of society and reinvest back into the people and the business who invest in them. It would be my honor to continue advocating for you, and I respectfully ask for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy Kelleher. And next, our candidate, Katie Roberto.
Thank you. So COVID has dealt us a new reality of change, and people are afraid of the unknown, we're afraid of the uncertainty. So as John C. Maxwell says, "Change is inevitable, but growth is optional." And in business, we keep talking about this ROC, this rate of change, compared to your ROL, your rate of learning. So are we learning and growing at the rate of change in our district? The world is going to keep changing, but will we keep growing as the world changes? The fact remains that if we do not keep up, we will fall behind. So let's not fall behind. Let's be trailblazers. Let's chart our course by being very deliberate. Our kids, our businesses, our taxpayers, our community deserve us to lead in the way of positive change. As a school board leader, I promise to continue growing at the rate of change. I promise to use my strengths to not allow us to fall behind. I promise to collaborate with all stakeholders to work through the issues and to ensure we come up with win-win solutions to continuing positioning our district for success. Thank you, and I'm excited to be on this journey with all of you.
Thank you, Katie Roberto. And next, we have Teri Lind.
First, I would like to thank the chamber for sponsoring this event. We all appreciate your efforts. The purpose of this forum was to give you a better understanding of the school board candidates' qualifications and opinions on a variety of issues so that you can make an educated choice at the polls. I would like to close by sharing with you why I think I am a candidate that you should vote for. First, with my hands-on experiences as a parent, grandparent, teacher, and principal, I feel I offer a unique perspective as a school board member. Being with the Lakeville schools for over 40 years, I can present views on how decisions impact individual schools, parents, children, and staff members directly. Second, we still have much work to do in the areas of student achievement, equity, dealing with the challenges of COVID-19, and meeting the needs of a growing student population. I feel my experience can greatly assist with these challenges. Third, I also feel there are stakeholders in the committee that have a disconnect with the school system, alumni, parents, senior citizens, and recent graduates. Since I've lived here for my whole career, I feel I have a good knowledge of the needs and desires of these different groups. As a school district, we face many challenges. I want to continue to help provide ideas that will ensure that an education in the Lakeville area public schools will continue to be second to none. Thank you.
Thank you, Teri Lind. Next, we have David Anderson.
Well, thank you for the opportunity tonight to let us, let the public get to know us. I'm asking for your support for Lakeville School Board. I have volunteered for many years serving the Lakeville School District in many capacities, and I have a lot of knowledge and experience dealing with all the different schools and many teachers and administrators in the district. I've had kids in six different schools, including both high schools and Kenwood and Century Middle Schools. I would ask for your vote to give me a chance to use my vast experience and knowledge of the district at even a higher level to help all the students and teachers to ultimately provide the best educational opportunities for all the students, no matter what groups they fit into. And thank you for the opportunity for tonight, and please visit my website at votedavidanderson.com for more information on my candidacy.
Thank you, David Anderson. And lastly, our candidate, Laura Sanders.
Thank you for this opportunity. With all of the challenges ahead of us between the COVID decision-making, as well as planning for district growth and budget constraints, there's a lot of decisive action that's needed now that is driven by careful analysis of details by this very board. I would love to be a part of that decision-making process. As an investment manager, working for an investment manager, I am keenly aware of fiscal responsibility and how important the use of the budget is. At the same At the same time, I don't want the integrity of our schools to ever slip because it's so important as a backbone of our community. I don't want to see our schools overcrowded or our classrooms overcrowded, which has been a bit of a struggle, so we need to have decisive planning to accommodate as our, as our resources and our, and our landscape changes. But most of all, my passion is with our youth and our community. I absolutely love kids and our students. I volunteer at sports, I lead Cub Scouts. They are the future of our community. They are so closely intertwined with our community, whether you have a student in the school currently or not. And the strength of our schools shouldn't be compromised and needs strong leadership. I would love to serve in the capacity as a board representative. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Sanders and all candidates. Before we close, on behalf of the businesses and residents of Lakeville and the Lakeville Area Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank each and every one of you for your passion to serve, and I would also like to thank you for your participation in tonight's forum. I would also like to thank the city of Lakeville and its staff for the use of this facility and for recording tonight's event. All forums will be rebroadcast on LGTV Channel 180 on Charter and Channel 187 on Frontier. You may go online at lakevillmn.gov and search under the Media Center tab, and you may also contact the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce at 952-469-2020 for access to the link. The Lakeville Area Chamber of Commerce has not and will not endorse any candidate in any election this year. I wish you all a wonderful evening. Please remember, please remember to exercise your right to vote on Tuesday, November 3rd, and good night. Thank you. (applause)